Thank you.
Good evening, Yorktown. Welcome to the May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three Town Board Work Session. Would all please rise for the pledge to the flag? John Landy, will you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If all could please remain standing for a moment of silence, please keep in your thoughts and prayers. All of our first responders, our police, fire, ambulance, EMTs that come to our aid on a daily basis. And let us never forget our servicemen and women who are on the front lines defending our freedom on a daily basis. Also, please keep in your thoughts and prayers the numerous people that were killed in the mall in Texas. Thank you. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. Just a couple, just a couple things. We had a great Fam Jam over the weekend. I hope some of you were able to attend. It was really a good event that's going to be sponsoring a lot of really worthy charities. They're even going to, Fam Jam has also pledged to give the Mohegan Fire, I'm sorry, Mohegan Ambulance, a donation. I'd like to also let you know about the Follow the French, the Rochambeau Festival at Rochambeau Park slash the Yorktown Grange Fairgrounds at ninety-nine Mosman Avenue. It will transport yourself back to the Revolutionary War, learn about the events that shaped our nation's history right here in Westchester County. It should be fun. There's going to be some reenactments. They're going to actually live right there for, for a day or so. Stay overnight and camp out. So that should be fun. That is on May twentieth from ten a.m. to four p.m. A lot of effort's been put into this, so please try to attend. We also, we also want to, our Parks and Rec Superintendent wants to thank our Police Department for the work that they did in apprehending an individual that did some criminal mischief to our Parks and Rec Building down on Sparkle Lake. They were able to ascertain who he was through video. And believe it or not, Fam Jam had a part in that. That's where they actually, when the officers were out walking around, they saw him at Fam Jam and were able to question him and arrested him for the criminal mischief of the broken window. And that's, that's about all I have for right now. John Landy, Bird Bus, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening, John.
Hey, John. How are you? Very good. It's another exciting time in Yorktown, opening another business.
Yes, it is.
You know, I love that. Yeah, especially that Kia that's been empty for how long?
It disappeared in two thousand and eighteen, I think, maybe earlier.
Well, I think it was earlier than that because I've been here since seventeen and it was closed way before that.
Yeah, and they, they never really got open. By the way, thank you. The place looks great. I know it's still working on it, but.
Oh, wait. It'll be really nice, I think, from the plans I saw and the contracts I saw that they have with the contractor to do the curving and do the planting. So that's why I'm here. Hopefully, hopefully, we can get them open. The building's ready. It's safe. I'm waiting for a couple of pieces of paper. But I had my guys through there throughout the week and everything looks good. So I'm asking if I can issue a TCO so we can get them going.
Sure. I, I, I don't think the board has a problem with that. I know there are some site plan issues that we have discussed. And we're going to be requiring a seventy-five thousand dollar cash bond until that, that particular, those particular items are taken care of. And, and I believe that that's, that's where we stand on that. And everything is safe? All the sprinklers are working? Everything's been inspected? The electrical's good?
Everything's good. Electrical's good. The air circulation system that takes the exhaust out is up and running. Sprinklers are up and running. So everything is, and what a system that is. It's an amazing system.
So what's, what's left?
Doing the parking lot, basically, the curving, plantings, things of that, the site plan issues.
No, no, I, I know. I just want the public to understand that. And I think the seventy-five thousand dollar cash bond is prudent. I don't have a problem with it.
I spoke with the applicant and I don't believe they have a problem with it either. I think they're going to come in tomorrow with a check, bring it to Dan, and then I'll issue the TCO if the board so wishes.
Okay, you know, as a rule, generally, we like to put this out to all of our other boards and stuff to let them know that it's going on. So in the future, we'll be going that way. But I know that you wanted to get this done. And I spoke it over with our, talked it over with our planning department, our, our town planner. And he thought that seventy-five would be more than acceptable for this particular incident. But from this point forward, we'll refer it out first and then.
I did.
Oh, you did?
I did a couple of weeks ago and then I kind of pulled back.
Okay.
Because when I went there, it wasn't to the point where I was comfortable with it. So yes, next time I will do that in a shorter length of time.
We'll get the Johns together?
Yes, we'll get the Johns. We've been together.
We've been, yeah, we've been doing good.
Doing good.
All right.
So if the board so chooses, once he issues the check to, I guess, the engineering department, I will issue the TCO.
Yep, sounds good. Everybody.
We need to vote? We don't need to vote?
We can vote. It doesn't hurt, right?
John, you're okay?
Have a motion?
Motion.
I just want to make sure, John, you're okay with that, right? Yep. Perfect.
Okay. Do you have a motion to give Bird Bus a TCO?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Go for it.
Doc, you should be doing a good job, man.
Thank you. All right. You know, this is, we have a little presentation here tonight and, and I think it's a great thing. Here in Yorktown, we're very, very fond of our seniors, seniors and not only our seniors, but our veterans, okay? And tonight, we have Elise Graham and Tin, Tim Hardig. Is that how you pronounce that? Hartung. Okay. And they have a presentation with regard to the Kappa Space. Mr. Kappa was a photographer, renowned photographer, who took wartime pictures. And they are up here to give us a little presentation on that and tell us what it's all about, where it's at, and, and we'll go from there. Elise, how are you?
I'm fine. How are you?
Good. Tim, thank you so much for coming, you guys.
You're welcome. Thank you all for welcoming us here and we're delighted to be here. Particularly being Military Appreciation Month, it's probably a good time to introduce the Kappa Space to the community we live in. Elise and I, both residents of Yorktown for over thirty-five years, have always dreamed about putting together a art center. And sort of through chance almost, we learned that Robert Kappa was buried here in Yorktown. To our surprise and we're learning more and more to everyone else's surprise that, you know, was he born here? How did he end up here was, is the common question, which I'll get to. But the Kappa Space is located at, on two, four, six, seven Quaker Church Road. It's about a three-minute drive from the center of Yorktown. And we hope everyone will come and, and visit us. It's a photographic exhibition and education space. And we took over the lease with the Amawak Friends Meeting for a little auxiliary building that's on the site of their meeting house, which I'm sure everyone is familiar with. It used to be their first day school. We took over the lease in September of last year and been working hard to renovate it into our space. And on April the eighth, we opened the exhibition called This is Robert Kappa. And we are open Thursday, Friday, Sundays, one to five, and Saturdays, eleven to five. And we're there waiting for people to come and we'll fill in all the questions that they may ask about the exhibition and talk about Robert Kappa's life. But the, the big question is, how did he end up in Yorktown? He was born in Hungary and then went on a circuitous route through Germany and back to Hungary and then, and then Paris, France, and became a war photographer at the age of like twenty-two when he first started covering the Spanish Civil War. Since that time or after that time, he covered five wars. And as Tom mentioned, he is known as the most famous war photographer that ever existed. His guidance to other photographers was always, if you don't take a good picture, it's because you're not close enough. And if you're familiar with his photography, you see that where he's right in the face of the danger and the photos that he's documenting. But even though he was in, he covered five wars in his lifetime. When he passed away stepping on a mine in what now we refer to as North Vietnam, you know, his, the military wanted to bury him in full regalia in Arlington Cemetery. But his mother said, no, my son was a man of peace, not a man of war. And he documented what he saw to bring to light to the people of the world, the travesty of war. And so, you know, she did not want him buried at, in a military ceremony. And Robert's editor at the time for Life Magazine, what happened to be a Quaker, and heard of her dilemma and approached her and her son Cornell, who later became and founded the International Center of Photography, if you're familiar with another great renowned center in New York City. The idea of a Quaker ceremony. John Morris was a Quaker from Purchase. So they had the ceremony in Purchase, but Purchase didn't have any grave sites. They reached out to other meetings and found space in Amawak. And it's rather rare that anyone that's not a Quaker be buried in a Quaker ceremony. But the family's belief in peace, equality and justice was very in sync with the philosophy of the Quakers and so they accepted him. So now not only is Robert buried there, but his mother's buried there. His brother Cornell is buried there, Cornell's wife and Robert's biographer, Richard Whalen. So it's a rather circuitous route that brought him here. But I think it's to our, all of our benefit that we find him here and we celebrate his work and the work of other people who are following in his footsteps as photographers. Aside from this major exhibition, we have a lot of ancillary programs that are happening throughout the summer. This exhibition is up from April eighth to October the eighth. Then we'll start a new exhibition at the end of the year. But I'll let Elise talk about some of the other programs that we're going to be having simultaneous.
So we do have a bunch of programs that we're presenting as part of the Robert Kappa Exhibition. The first one that I want to tell you about, I actually spoke to Councilman Lakterman about, which is a call for photographs from veterans during their time of service. And we have a place set up on our website, thekappaspace.org, where people can go who have photographs of their time in service. They can submit those photographs. And then we are, actually, the person who curated the Robert Kappa Show will then curate these photographs. And we're going to create a slideshow that we're going to present at least twice to the community where the people who submitted are welcome to come, members of the community are welcome to come to see this slideshow and to discuss and to have a conversation and to interact as they see these photographs. We are also hoping to, we're working on it right now. We're hoping to bring it to the, to Montrose, to the Veterans Hospital in Montrose and have a showing there of that, of these, of this slideshow. So if anybody knows anyone who has photographs that they would like to submit, go to the website, thekappaspace.org, and there's a button that you can press and be directed to a site where those will be accepted. So that's one program.
You been getting any response on that?
Yes, and it's just been incredible. You know, you kind of have an idea and you think, oh, this seems like a good idea, but you really don't know how it's going to play out. And I have to say, the first couple of photographs that we got were just incredible and is very heartening. I'm just very excited.
Our adjutants from both the VFW and the Post put it out, so I want to.
Oh, good. Great. Yeah, we're looking just to get as many, as many submissions as we can to show a broad range of photographs and experiences. Another program that we're working on is a theatrical presentation of a play called George and Ruth, Letters and Songs from the Spanish Civil War. And it's a two-person play where it's a reading of letters back and forth from a young newlywed couple from New York City where George goes off to fight in the Spanish Civil War with the Abraham Lincoln Brigade, which was the name of the group that came from the United States to fight, to fight against the fascists in Spain. So this is a play of a reading of letters and it also includes a musician who will be singing and playing the guitar. And he'll be singing, or she will be singing, hasn't been cast yet, songs of the Spanish Civil War. So it'll create an environment of.
When is that?
That is, you can check on the website. It's June eleventh. It's a Sunday. And it's also, that's a two, the one on Sunday, and it's also Thursday, June fifteenth at six thirty.
That sounds really interesting. What's the website again? Tell everybody.
It's thekappaspace.org. And all of this information is, is on the space, times, dates, et cetera.
It was interesting. I had gone on it not long ago and just to check it out a little bit. And you know, if, if, I know you're not through yet, but when, maybe you could put together a little slideshow for us here that we could show to folks. It doesn't have to be all the ones. I mean, if you have some that you have on a thumb drive or something, is that a possibility, Diana? That we could do that?
We thought about that, Tom, and thought, well, we really want people to come to the space. So our discussion here is a big tease.
Well, I figured just enough to wet the beak, you know?
And just one last.
Like two.
One last program that we're working on that I, I hope the town finds inspirational because actually this program is being led by somebody in Osining. It's a gentleman named Ron Whitehead, is a photography and art teacher at the Osining High School. He's also a veteran. And for years, he's been doing programs with art students and, and veterans. And for us, what he's doing is he's getting a group of probably about fifteen of his photography students. They're pairing up with veterans. They're coming to the space and using the Robert Kappa Show as a prompt. They're going to go around the show together. And then the students are going to do photographic kind of essays that they will present to the veterans at, you know, after a certain amount of time when they're able to take the photographs. And, and then we're going to actually have a show of those photographs at the space sometime in November.
Very good.
Yeah.
That is really, I'll tell you, it's, it's really an interesting, an interesting thing. And, and especially seeing the, like I said, just going through the site a little bit and looking at some of it. Like I said, just, just a couple of photos. We, we want to get people, we want, we want to get their interest, you know, sparked so that they go and, and see the whole thing.
I think if you come to visit the space now and see the Robert Kappa photographs, that will be inspiration.
All right, all right. I'm trying, I'm trying, folks, I'm trying.
That was a very good counter, by the way.
Yes, you did good, didn't you? I liked that.
Well, you know, it's an, it's an easy lift because his photographs are just incredible. And he captures not only the, you know, war, but of all, he, he captures everyone that gets caught in, in conflict. And he's just an incredible talent. So we're really looking forward to you, you coming down and seeing the show.
It's funny because, you know, years ago, this is how people, this is how people saw what was going on. Now you have satellites that can, you know, that, that'll take your picture of your shoelace untied.
Well, it's interesting.
Back then, you had to get out there, the bombs are flying, you know, this, you know, this is amazing, you know?
You know, all the work that he did was to be published mostly in Life Magazine. And that is how people related to what was going on in the world.
Yeah.
This is all for me?
Do you want me to put your page up briefly? I can't.
So we stepped online.
Sure. We're proud of it.
Thanks, Tim.
We already have the magazine.
Amazing, right?
And there's some, actually, you could see amazing photos just in the magazine.
Yeah.
We have, we have copies of many, many of the actual magazines where the, the photographs were first printed.
It's amazing.
So it's interesting to see them in context as, as everyone saw them at the time.
Yeah, we're going to try, you're going to trigger it up on the big screen?
So while we're waiting for that to come up, do you intend on in the future doing anything, marrying his work with Greta's work, Greta Tara's work?
That's a great question and the answer is yes, because she is kind of an unsung heroine of, of war photography because she died so young. She was, I think, twenty-six or twenty-seven years old when she actually, she was the first female photographer to die in, in battle. She died during the Spanish Civil War, but her, her photographs are equally great. And yes, we are planning to have an exhibition of hers in the future.
Yeah, because, well, they worked together, correct? And maybe even more.
Yeah, but yes, they worked together. They, they, yes, yes. And she was, you know, she was responsible for a lot of his success at the very beginning. She created a persona for him. He was born Andre Friedman. He was not born Robert Kappa. It was her idea to come up, you know, with a name and an identity that.
Right. And they were both actually Jewish.
Yes, they were.
And changed their names to try to.
Exactly.
Robert Kappa was born Andre Friedman.
Right.
Yeah, I just mentioned. Are there any other questions?
We got it up on the screen here, some of it.
Oh, great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much. I'm so happy that we, that we could get you to come.
It's amazing.
This is good stuff. This is really good stuff. Folks, take, if you get an opportunity, head up there to check it out.
Okay.
All right.
Elise, I do, I'm sorry, if I could ask you to step the microphone. I just had a thought on a question. So, so you gave some specific hours that you were available, that the, the space was available.
Yes.
What if like a veterans group or a school, a living history group wanted to try to come in at a different time? Is, is it open for appointments? Would you be able to?
We could do that.
Okay.
Call me.
We'll take care of that.
Yeah, I would love that. I would love, I would love it if they came, if you could do that and they came at a time that we're open. But I would certainly open the doors.
Right. But I know midweek, you know, the one to five is hard, especially students and, and some of the veterans that are still working, so just a thought.
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
We'd be happy to.
Yeah, and it's all, as we said, it's not only a gallery, but an educational space too. Reaching out to the local high schools in particular and trying to develop a collaboration in terms of coordinating with their programs. And we've gotten some expressed interest. So in the future, we hope to actually be teaching photography with people. So it's more than just an exhibition space.
And Elise, you know Paul Martin, correct? From the Historical Society?
Yes.
He's very involved with living history.
Yes.
So he might be a great contact for the schools too?
Yeah.
Just because he does, he just did a program, he and his daughter did a World War Two program at our middle school.
He's on our radar.
Good, okay.
I would also like to just give a shout out to Tiffany Dykman, who is a photography teacher at Lakeland. She really, you know, goes beyond and is terrific and she's come. And we had an educator's reception and I was just so happy to see a Yorktown area teacher come and be very enthusiastic and, 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 and wants to bring students there. And so just a shout out to her.
Sure. And if you need Paul's information, let me know.
Okay, I'll be in touch.
Thank you, Ed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
It's pretty neat. And I had looked through the book and read a couple of stories in there and it's, it's very interesting. I'm definitely going to take a, a run up there and check out the photos and stuff. Should be pretty good. All right, we're going to move right on to resolutions. From the Comptroller, we're going to authorize the comptroller to pay Ann C. Scroy as fiduciary the cash value of Kenneth Scroy's unused benefit time. Does this go on? We're gonna, we're going to authorize the comptroller to refund duplicate tax payments. There's a number of them there. Authorize the comptroller to process the following budget transfers from, transfer fifteen thousand from Chemical Supply Plant, DEP Y S to maintenance repair at the Yorktown Sewer. Authorize comptroller to process the following budget transfer, seventy-five thousand from Yorktown Sewer to Y S Chemical Supply. Authorize comptroller to process the following budget transfer from Highway Fund Balance to Highway Paving and from Fund Balance once again to Highway Paving and from Fund Balance once again to Highway Paving. The Engineering Department, authorize the engineer to obtain services from Film Tech Corporation Services Technicians. That's for changing of the filters at the sewage treatment plant. And authorize bond numbers, six, zero, eight, one, zero, three, two, five, zero, be accepted for completion of the Hilltop Hanover Subdivision and the, and be released to Hilltop Hanover Construction LLC. I promised Pat that I would do this. Okay, Pat, here it is. Here's the bond.
Bond.
All right, where was I? I lost my page here. There we go.
This is library.
Library. Promote Stephanie Leo to civil service title Librarian One, job class code zero, two, two, four, dash, zero, one, effective May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, from the Police Department. Assign Daniel Curtis to the position of detective, effective May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Assign James Hannigan to the position of detective, effective May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Congratulations, guys and gal. And we also have, also from the Police Department, be it resolved that Chad A. Delgado, Police Officer, New York Town Police Department, has completed the twelve weeks, weeks minimum probationary period and is hereby granted permanent status as of May tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Congratulations, Chad. From the Town Board, extend a bid for Cummins Engine OEM parts for one year with a date ending June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Extend a bid for John Deere Construction Equipment OEM parts for one year with date ending June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. And we're going to authorize the Town Clerk to advertise, forbid the new study rooms at the John Seehart Library. That's an exciting, an exciting project that's going to go on.
But I do want to note that we haven't received the document.
You haven't received the document yet. Okay, so we have to receive the document before we can advertise?
You can put it into advertise. Well, I'm just letting you know, we haven't got the document yet, but I'll reach out to the library tomorrow.
Okay.
We have it, it'll be, you have it tomorrow, Tom, morning.
Okay, so we have that. And we have one more resolution to read in. Adam, should I go through this whole resolution or just?
You, you can, you can give it to, I'm, I'm going to email it to Diana.
Okay.
Town Clerk. So you can either read it or, you know, reference it and make a motion. The board members have copies in front of them.
Right. All right, why don't I read it in? All right, this is, this is for the Underhill Farm Abatement. Whereas on November of two thousand and twenty, the adoption of Local Law thirteen, dash, twenty, twenty, the Town of Yorktown Town Board amended Chapter three hundred zoning of the Yorktown Town Code when it added Article thirty-one, Plan Design District Overlay Zones. Plan Design District Overlay Zones. And whereas, the legislative purpose and intent of Article thirty-one was stated clearly when the Town Board found to determine that there is a need throughout the Town of Yorktown to encourage and establish further economic development. To stimulate that growth and provide for revitalization, the Town requires the use of smart growth techniques capable of creating smarter, less wasteful, and more economical, efficient development patterns. Specifically, the Town needs flexibility in its land use, which bolsters economy development, I'm sorry, economic development by providing not only a diverse array of commercial businesses, but mixed-use residential and commercial parcels to both provide abundant job opportunities and contribute to local tax base. And duly adopted the amendment. And whereas, in furtherance of the proposed and intended intent of Article thirty-one in January of twenty-twenty-two, the Town Board amended Chapter three hundred zoning, Article thirty-one, Plan Design District Overlay Zones, when it added Section three hundred, dash, two hundred and fifty-five, Yorktown Heights Plan District, Design District Overlay Zone. Whereas, project sponsor Underhill Farms LLC, Underhill Farms, sought authorization from the Town Board to have it propose multifamily mixed-use commercial project located at the former site of the Soundview Property School at three seventy Underhill Avenue in the Town of Yorktown, considered under the overlay regulations. And whereas, the Town Board found the project complied with the requirements of Article thirty-one and deemed project eligible to apply for site plan under auspices of the overlay district. Whereas, Underhill Farms made application to Town of Yorktown Planning Board for the site plan review and review under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SEER, and collectively both referred to as site plan review, and that review is currently underway. And whereas, during the course of the site plan review, certain impacts were identified and corresponding mitigation measures have been proposed for each impact. One such impact being existing undesirable service levels of the intersection of State Route one eighteen and Underhill Avenue. Whereas, Underhill Farms has proposed to finance and undertake a full reconstruction of the intersection, including the installation of certain improvements that will improve services of the intersection beyond the potential impact proposed by the project. And whereas, Underhill Farms has requested the Town Board's support in certain real property tax abatements for eligible portions of the improvements to the intersection through an application made with the Westchester County Industrial Development Agency. And whereas, having recognized the greater community benefit offered by the project, and in particular, the proposed intersection improvements, the Town Board has agreed to support the project's abatement proposal. And whereas, the US, I'm sorry, the New York State DOT has requested confirmation that the Town and Underhill Farms have come to an understanding about the financing of the intersection improvements. And whereas, the project is contingent upon all necessary approvals, including site plan review. Whereas, Underhill Farms has committed to contributing two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars towards town parks and recreation purposes in addition to the intersection contribution. Now, therefore, be it resolved as follow. Resolved, the Town Board supports Underhill Farms' application to the WCIDA for real property tax abatement of eligible portions of the project. And resolve, the abatement shall therefore, shall adhere to the following parameters. The period of tax abatement shall coincide with the amount of time required for Underhill Farms to recapture eligible expenditures. Underhill Farms shall contribute thusly, payment not to exceed six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-eight cents toward the cost of the intersection improvements. The cost of construction of the intersection improvements beyond the intersection contribution shall be six hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents, shall be eligible for the real property tax abatement for the necessary term to recapture that amount. The abatement shall be limited to the retail slash rental units building of the project, that's the commercial portion, and only regarding applicable county, town, and school taxes over the current taxes of forty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. The amendment to, I'm sorry, the abatement on the commercial portion shall begin after the intersection improvements have been completed, such as after all necessary sign-offs have been issued, including a certificate of completion slash occupancy, and after reassessment based on the construction of the commercial portion of the project has occurred. The abatement is contingent upon all necessary approvals, including site plan approval. And that's it? Motion to accept all resolutions? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Yorktown.
Night, Yorktown.